Two minutes after five, we're going to open up the regular board meeting and our opening exercises by Mr. Doug Dodd.
Ms. Councils, thank you. This is my one pro-opening exercise. I know we're a little bit set up here and we're going to keep it brief, but you know, these are some uncertain times, uncharted territory in a lot of ways for us all. People struggling, they're looking for answers, and I know that God can give us peace and comfort and strength, and that's where we really need to turn. So I've asked Reverend Doug Alexander to come today to open something in the word prayer, and I pray for our school district and our employees, our students, just the entire community. And Doug, we appreciate the work you do in this community. You've been a great influence on a lot of people's lives, and we appreciate the work you do to reach out to those less fortunate and to feed people and help people. And it really means a lot for our community to have someone like you, and I appreciate you as a friend and as a brother. So I ask if he would come and just say a few words just to open something and then just please some clench. So Doug, it's all right.
And thank you, everybody, for allowing me to be here. It's a great time, and I know it's a tough time for the whole world, for the nation and for Citrus County. But I'm grateful that we have a staff like you guys, a school board, and do what you guys do and how you stand. So my prayers today that I want to pray for you guys, I want to pray for the school, I want to pray for the students and their families, and I want to pray for this community, pray for our president, our nation, and just pray for the little world, that this thing go and that we can all come back together very soon. So let's pray. Father, we thank you today. God, we just coming for you, and we ask you, God, to, Lord, accept our prayer, accept our petition today. We come to you, Lord, and ask you, God, to look upon this school board and, Lord, continue to give them wisdom and guidance if they continue to do school board business. I pray special blessings upon each of them and their families, God, to keep them safe and protected from this virus. I pray for their families, Lord. I pray for the schools and all the school staff, the teachers, God, the janitors, Lord, all the support personnel. I pray, God, that you continue to keep everybody attached and both safe and protected. Pray for the students and their way, God, that they receive the instruction, God, via Internet, God, that everything will work well with that, and that, God, that you continue to give guidance from this board on how to continue to give good guidance, Father. We pray special blessing, Lord, for this community. We ask you to look upon Citrus County, look upon Emerson, look upon this nation, look upon this world. Just continue to just keep us in your arms and protect us. Oh, we pray for our president, we pray for his staff, we pray for medical personnel. God, we pray, God, for first responders. We pray for each and every one of us, God, as we continue to, God, ask you to give us the answer, give us the answer, Lord, and then bless us and keep us close together, Lord. Oh, we ask that special blessing for those that are hurting, you know, the families that's hurting or the businesses that are hurting. Father, continue to let us be a close community as we stand together. Father, we pray a simple prayer that you taught your disciples, and, Lord, that prayer you said to pray because it covers everything. So maybe it's something I forgot, but, Lord, we pray the prayer that you taught your disciples. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth and in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses if we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. God is the King of power and glory forever.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice on all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good day, Doug.
Good for your prayer.
Thank you for seeing you. We need to have a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent, Himmel.
I move to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent, Himmel.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to adopt the agenda as recommended by Superintendent Himmel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We're going to recess the regular meeting now, and we are going to open up the public hearing to hear the three policies. Is anything by wants comment? Is there any out there?
No one out there.
No comment?
No, ma'am.
Should I ask, Ms. Councils, anyway?
Yep.
Are there any, is there anybody out there that wants to make a public comment about the three policies that are going to be adopted? Anybody, no green cards, anybody out there wants to come in and talk about the policies?
No, ma'am, I'll check the hall. There's no one here.
Is Mike on there?
No.
Last time, no, no citizens comments, so we'll, we'll look at the first subject is the 2021 attendance boundary maps for elementary, middle, and high schools.
Move approval of the 2020-2021 attendance boundary maps for elementary, middle, and high schools.
Second.
Second? Do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Powers, to adopt the attendance. Doug Dodd, Doug Dodd.
I second.
I want to.
That's good.
It was a second by Doug Dodd to adopt the attendance boundaries for the 2020-21 school year, which are the same boundaries as the 2019-2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. The second policy is policy 2.29, the Citrus County School Board Police Department.
I need to approve policy 2.29.
Ms. Powers?
Yes, sir.
Can you move the microphone?
I shall.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve and adopt policy 2.29, Citrus County School Board Police Department. All those in favor, say aye. Say it three times. I have, I have a motion by, did I say that three times? No.
No, you did, I think you did all of them right at the beginning.
Okay.
She did, she said all three.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I'll just check again. No, ma'am.
No way? Okay. All right, so I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve and adopt policy 2.29, Citrus County School Board Police Department. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
If Dennis doesn't manage.
Motion passes five zero. Third and final policy is policy 3.403, Safe and Secure School, the School Guardians.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 3.403, Safe and Secure Schools, School Guardians.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve and adopt policy 3.403, Safe and Secure Schools, School Guardians. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will close the public meeting, and we will reopen the regular meeting and call for citizens' comments on the agenda. Citizens' comments, reserved comments, requesting approval on the agenda or on any other subject.
No green cards.
No green cards. Do I have to say this one three times?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I don't know. Good. Next, we're going to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Do we want to read the recognition of donations like we normally do?
I need it total.
All of you want to do it?
Yes, I want.
Well, because they could stream it, and we'd like to say thank you to our community, so, you know, some people, not that you watch them now, but they might watch it later, so.
I think we need a motion to approve and recognize the donations, so I'll make that one.
And second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Powers and a second by Mrs. Bryant to approve and recognize the donations. And do you want me to read them now?
Donations, approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from J. M. Gibson Mechanical. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Mike Scott Plumbing. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Joseph Bennett Senior Trust. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Jeffrey Webb. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Douglas and Laura Dodd. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Mike Scott Plumbing. Approve the $2,000 donation to Christopher High School from an anonymous donor. Approve the $1,000 donation to La Canto High School from F&amp;H Contractors. Approve the $1,000 donation to La Canto High School from SNG. Approve the $634 donation to the Marine Science Station from Coastal Conservation Association. Approve the $600 donation to the Marine Science Station from Citrus County Audivon Society. And approve the $3,125 donation to WTC from the Horatio Alger Association of Distinguished Americans. That's a total of $12,359 in donations.
And we thank our community because our students and our teachers could not survive some of the programs that they provide with these donations, so we thank them. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. And Mr. Dodd, thank you for supporting that scholarship. All right. Next on our agenda, we have part five, Educational Services, Research and Accountability, Approval of Purchase for Advanced Placement AP Exams. Do you all need any of you to come in?
Yeah.
I don't think we need to because.
I had a couple of questions out there, maybe you could answer them.
Hang on.
I'm going to go ahead though and move approval of the Advanced Placement AP Exams.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Powers, to approve the purchase of the Advanced Placement AP Exams and discussion. Doug, she's on her way down.
Okay, that's fine. And I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on the AP process this year and on these exams because I thought we had purchased, is this for next year, and they were going to find out for me on that, Ms. Himmel, if that was, is this for the exams that are coming up? Do you know? That's one of the questions I had asked yesterday. But also, I was just curious about the, the alternative test that's going to be given, the online test, and if students were going to be able to have the opportunity to retake it later using the standard test process or if we heard anything from the college board on what they're going to do with, you know, retakes or if a student were to opt out of the test, could they take it later? Those are kind of the questions I want to know. I know there's a lot of.
Unanswered.
And, yeah, a lot of, a lot of questions about that, but I understand that the college board has.
We, my, my daughter's actually going to be sitting for two of them.
Yeah.
So we're, we're.
There's no multiple choice though, right? Because they can't, that's the way I understand it. There's not going to be multiple choice questions.
Yeah, and I'll let, I'll let.
And sometimes the students opt out of them, but that's because they've taken early out and they aren't even accepted by their, their college, so they don't need questions.
No, I started walking.
Okay, go ahead.
Good to see you.
Hello.
Hello.
I have a couple of questions about the exam itself, what we're purchasing. I know it's a different alternative online test. It's, I understand it's not going to have multiple choice questions, but written answers and it's going to be timed. It's going to be a certain day. All those things are, are set, but yet I wanted to know, is this the $174,250 for the tests that are going to be taken this semester? I thought we already approved tests for the, the school year, but.
We budget each year for the following year's AP tests. In the fall, we order the, that's actually when we order the tests is in the fall, but we don't actually pay for them until now. We're not paying for them until towards the end of June now. Once we actually see who does test, because that's the other piece, is normally with AP testing, once a student, once we order the tests, if a student then doesn't take the test, we still have to pay a portion of it. It's your, that's why you want to still, you want to test as many, of course, as you order because you're still going to have to pay somewhat for something, maybe for the test. However, they did waive that this year for this year's testing. So students are going to be testing at home. And like you said, the format of the test, you have 45 minutes to respond. They're going to have around, you know, question one's going to have around 25 minutes, question two is going to have 20 minutes or so, and then it is open book. It is, it's an open book test, have the open notes, they can use the Internet. They can actually respond electronically, or they can handwrite and submit a picture of their work. It's, it's very, very different and seems very flexible, and we don't really know exactly how it's going to work or what it's going to look like, I should say. We do, we've had a few different webinars with college board, you know, to go over it. But we, the part that's a little, is the wishy-washy part is that we do not know who actually will end up taking the test because they're at home. If the student chooses not to take the test, they don't pay it. They don't have to. You know what I'm saying? And we don't even know they didn't take it unless we survey them or ask them. And until June, we get the invoice, and we actually see in June, this is how many tests that you need to pay for.
So they are going to waive the cost if a student doesn't, if we sign the student up to take the test and they don't end up taking the exam, we're not going to have to pay for it.
Correct, which is wonderful.
Okay, that is wonderful.
Yes, so, so if anything, we're, I mean, yes, that $174,000, chances are we're going to not spend all of that.
Right. So, had they said anything, if a student were to opt out of this alternative method, would they be eligible to take the standard test at another date, another time? Do we know if that's going to be an option for the students?
Um, I don't know, I mean, we, I mean, a student could take an assessment, they would have to pay for it. You know what I'm saying, themselves, if they were trying to, kind of almost like a flapping type idea of, you know, getting a college credit, like, so I'm assuming they would be able to, be the question of are we paying for it or are they paying for it? Because right now, we are paying, we are offering this test right now for you to take.
Right.
And paying for it, but if it's not in that format, we can definitely ask that of college board, how that would work.
Right. I mean, and I guess, because they could retake an AP exam.
Mm-hmm. Okay, they could, but it would be the who's paying for it.
Who's paying for it, right? And so I, I guess, I know there's some concern of, you know, everything is written now, and basically it's what, 40 to 45 minute exam.
Oh, yeah.
And.
And there's two windows. They can take it in May, at the beginning of May, and there's, you know, a certain date that you take it if you are in this course, if you're on, or, and they're calling it makeups, are in June. However, they're advertising it to the students that you can take it in May, or you could wait until June to take it. So again.
Are we telling our, I mean, do our students know that, or what are we doing?
That's, we are pushing, of course, men to take it.
Right.
However, it's, what's difficult with college board is, is that each student has a college board account, and if they are enrolled in those courses, those, those, college board is directly communicating to those families and is giving them all this information. So they are aware that, that, you know, they can take it in June, they can take it in May, they honestly are aware that they don't need to take it at all. We, though, are really pushing that. We want you to take the assessment. It cannot hurt you to take the assessment. It can only help you. It's not going to affect your grade. It's never affected their grade before. It is a different format. It's only going to be 45 minutes. Like, it, it, the only thing it could do is possibly give you college credit. So we really, really are encouraging our students to take it if they were in that course.
Amy, do we have any idea how long it's going to take to grade these different tests?
Oh, I have no idea. I do know that they added a piece of it, and it's a little, and I wrote it down because, like I said, we've been doing these webinars, and Stephanie Gardner's kind of overseeing this whole process for research accountability, and what she told me was is that they are, for security reasons, that they're going to actually send the assessments, the teachers are going to have a copy of the students' work. As, like, they're going to actually get copies of it. Can we see right here, it says, "Teachers will receive copies of the student responses to check for anomalies." So I don't, I mean, that's part of, like, I guess, the security pieces of almost like looking for is their normal work, trying to check for cheating and things like that, but again, you know, that's, it's all written. I'm sure there's going to be rubrics involved and things like that, but who's scoring them, I don't know. They still are saying that we're expected to get scores when we normally get scores, which is in July. I don't know how that would be, especially if the testing, possibly testing at the beginning of June.
A friend of mine who's retired from teaching the three AP is, is grading. She's already scheduled for the first week in June down in Tampa.
For the May, probably.
Yeah.
It's just a very different kind of scoring, though, multiple choice versus a complete essay.
Well, she's done the essays before, so.
Gotcha.
Well, and then.
That's its schedule.
If it's an open book, open note, open Internet, I mean, the plagiarism, I mean, they got to make sure that students aren't copying, right? And do they check, I assume they probably have.
I think that's why the format is, they, that's what some of the nervousness of the format is, is that's probably being taken into consideration, accepting that, but then saying, okay, are they going to cite sources correctly? Are they going to be doing all of the other aspects to say, okay, we're giving you it as, they, they know it's going to be open book.
So now the question is, will they design the test knowing that you should still be able to find that information
and know that information?
And will June's questions be different than May's?
Oh.
You would assume so because obviously, but at the same time, now you're talking about two, I mean, for the same course, for the same test, two different items, you know, saying, or.
And I'll tell you, during the train, because I, I went to a couple of AP seminars in the summer because I did a pre-AP, it's a sophomore class, and there's something that's called the writer's voice. And these guys that grade this three AP, they are so trained to that rubric, and if that voice is not in there, that's not going to pass. And so they're trained to that. And the other thing about the electronics, because I still remember when we started all this stuff, we thought, oh, my heavens, we had to look for weeks for, through books to look for plagiarism, and the Internet has made it very easy. You type in one sentence, it pops right up for you. It's so easy to catch plagiarism now.
Yeah, the software.
Software, yeah.
Yeah.
So will they be using software?
I'm assuming, they did, college board did not inform us of that, of what, if they're using software at all. I know that colleges, of course, have used that. I do know that they are allowing students to take a picture of their essay handwritten and submit it. I don't know how that would then have to be then typed into the software to check plagiarism. I don't know. It's a lot of unanswered questions, but I mean, we are, one thing that we did decide, though, is that if we do say return back to school in May, we are still going to have students take this assessment at home with their device because of the way it is set up, the way that they've already set up the entire schedule. So those days, it would be an excuse absence because they would be assessing during that time at home. So, I mean, that's just, so we had these backup plans already in place as well. Teachers are still getting the bonuses that, like, they have in the past for every past assessment, the $50 they get, that is still going to be enacted. So they are doing roster application, things like that. So, I mean, most of the stuff has stayed the same except for the format of the test, and obviously, the security of the test is very different.
And we still don't know, I mean, each institution, now, public tends to be a little different because public will take a three often as they were passing.
Usually in a university.
Yeah, the universities. Sorry, thank you. But privates, many of them are requiring a four or five, and who knows, they could change the model either favorably or unfavorably following this. And I, I, you know, I know even in our own family, because it's been a regular conversation, we just say, you know what? We do our best. We take, I think that advice of, of the district is saying, let's take the test. It's only probably going to have an upside at this stage, and.
There's nothing bad that could happen.
I think, you know, encouraging is, is probably our best model.
Right. And we, and like I said, we're probably going to have money left over in the budget. We also get a reduced fee based on students that are free reduced lunch, so there is a, a piece taken off of that once we get those exact numbers. So that 176 is, we're not probably going to spend all of that.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
If you could give me a list of questions, Amy, I can ask Cheryl after she finishes grading in June what they did.
I agree. If she's allowed to share.
Well, just the process.
Oh, that's true. Thank you.
Okay. All those, any other discussion? We have the motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor of approval of purchase of the Advanced Placement Exams from the general fund project in 11350?
Yes. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And next on the agenda is Human Resources, Mrs. Swain, Instructional Support, and Support Recommendations on the Goldenrod. Mrs. Swain, I think, touched base with all of us and had questions answered over the phone, so she asked me if I would just present the Goldenrod and ask for your approval and instructional, instructional and support recommendations as, as presented on the Goldenrod.
Move approval of Instructional Support.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the Personnel and Support Recommendations on the Goldenrod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Budget update!
Okay.
Amy's still at the podium out there, just so you know. Going in yet or not?
Do we have some paperwork?
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So you did get the budget amendments and the monthly financials. They were sent to you this morning. A little delay. Everybody's working from home, so trying to get everything from them. We also, we're trying to, we were trying to work pretty hard this month to get the, recoup what budget we could due to the COVID-19, what's going on, and as you can see, the budget amendment is quite large this month. We closed out a lot of projects of things that won't happen, Math Field Day, County Fair, Academic Challenge, those things, we brought the budget back into the fund balance so we could see where we were. We also were able to bring in about 1.3 million back into salaries because we won't be hiring subs, we won't be having extra duties, we won't, all this overtime and things like that that we budgeted for. We won't be doing that or filling positions at this time. So we were able to bring some money back in, into the budget, you know, to try and help us prepare for next year. So that was one thing we wanted to make sure we accomplished and got these to you with as much brought back in as possible. We were able to also bring back in about $616,000 to the capital fund. So that is just the difference of closing out last year's projects that finally closed and the differences in what we budgeted to what the projects for this summer came in as, which you've approved those, the last couple of board meetings, you've approved the capital projects for next, or this summer, I should say. So, you know, we budgeted X amount based on estimates, and then they came in lower, so we were able to bring some of that back into the capital fund. So trying to save every penny right now that we can with not knowing what's going on. We've been moving forward in the budget process. HR's been pushing the budget over. The departments have been submitting their budgets, and we'll start putting all that together. We haven't heard anything from the state yet of anything's changing, so we're moving forward with, with things, preparing the budget as we normally would. So that's where we are on that. Are there any questions?
What is the, what, on the timing side, what are you hearing on the state appropriations for next year? And where we're going to have that, what have you heard for next school year, when we're going to get our? I know the governor hasn't signed.
The final, I haven't heard anything. I mean, I haven't.
There's going to be some changes, though.
Right.
But we're at that.
I would assume.
Have they approved the budget? They approved it, but the governor's not signed it, and there's talk of a special session now. There's talk of.
Right. I don't, I mean, I've heard the same as, as you guys have heard, I don't have the inside source to the governor, so.
Well, I.
I don't, yeah.
I thought it was the finest record you have of an inside run.
I don't, and I mean.
A crystal ball.
Yeah.
That we got.
I wish I did. I wish I did. It would meet my job so much easier.
We really need to get a little tree out back and see how.
At least a magic eight ball.
We've been told the superintendents to expect a special session and to expect your budgets to be cut for next year because of everything that's going on and money and those types of things. I don't know if that's why the government hasn't signed it and expect to go back in the special session, and they don't feel like it's going to be if they go back, it's just going to be when they tell us to go back in the session.
And the stimulus money and how it filters down is going to be a factor in them rebuilding those budgets.
Right, right. So right now, we're just watching our budgets. We're watching what the schools are purchasing. We're limiting them on, you know, not stocking up for next year, but, you know, getting what you need right now to take care of your teachers and your staff. Teachers still need things and stuff, but we're. Teachers still need things and stuff, but we're encouraging them not to go, let's go stock up for next year because we don't know what next year holds budget-wise. Also, school-wise, we just, we don't know where we're going to be. So we're really being very stringent on, on watching those purchases right now from the school side, so...
And I've asked Amy to look at other districts who've not met class size in the past few years to see what type of penalty is because we all know that it costs less money to not meet class size than it does to meet class size. So even if we, as a district, decided not to meet it, but maybe put two students per class above, or one student, what that would mean does and that type of thing. So, we're gonna have to look at everything because you know where the money comes from. If the budget gets cut way back, it's stacking. So we're gonna look at that and see how much it would cost compared if we stacked every classroom. Because I know that even if we went with two students per class, where we'd go from 25 to 27, and 22 to 24, and the upper grades, that I think we'd save close to 50 teachers. So we need to, we're gonna have to look at those and bring those back to y'all. I'm not saying we're not meeting class size. I just think that needs to be a topic of discussion. You know, if we get to where we really gotta, um, it, it depends on how bad they cut our budgets. And maybe they've got a tree up there, too. Seems like federal government does, but I don't know the state government.
They've got it divided into them and us.
Well, we have realized some savings here. I mean, even with the fuel costs, that we're not running buses like we were, so there's some savings.
Right.
You know, I, I appreciate that, you know, you guys are kind of watching the spending side closely because I think we're gonna need as much as we can for next school year because I have the feeling that there will be a special session, too, and that there will be a change in that, um, in the monies that we get. So, um, you know, and I guess even with traveling, you kind of mentioned fair, I did notice that there was like $9,000...
Yeah, that's to pay the, um, the ag teachers because they're on spring break usually. So, you know, we have a little bit of money there. We haven't actually touched the fuel budget or, um, a real big chunk out of the utilities because we haven't really been able to forecast what we're going to save there. But I know gas prices are low and we're not riding, driving our buses as much. So we should see some savings in that. But right now, we'll be looking more at the human capital of what we could save, you know, pull back in this year. So, um, and there's still some reserves out there, you know, if we do have to bring in some people. But we tried to look at what we had available to bring back in at this time.
And the discussion with Powell had seen conference should be, why do, why do you penalize us for one or two children when it can save this much money in salaries? And class size amendment has been a kind of a thorn in education's side since they passed it because it sounds, sounds good, and it's totally unrealistic. And I, I took it on in '16 with Simpson. And I said, you know, if your granddaughter's a 26 kid and my class is full, she gets fluff classes until we get an open seat. I said, you need to give us some flexibility. And there's not much difference, at least at the high school level, between teaching 25 kids and teaching 30 kids. I had classes of 40 back in the seventies.
I did too. My dedication, although, so...
Yeah, so, maybe that's a point, it's a good time to bring up the discussion of the penalty at all. You know, maybe get a little wobble in, in the 25 and the 24, and we don't get a penalty until we exceed X amount of kids and see if they'll buy something like that. Any other questions right now? All right. Good job again. You all stay safe and, um, have a good evening. Thank you.
The audit was nice.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Yes, a good audit. Very nice.
Thank you.
Attorney legal matters?
No, ma'am, I'll call you for that thing.
Okay, need, um, three minutes of proof. We can do it like we've been doing it in one motion. Do you all...
Move approval of items, uh, what is that, 10? 10, 15, A, B, and C.
Okay. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryant to approve, uh, minutes for March 10th, 2020, March 13th, 2020, March 31st, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes by zero. Any other business that needs to come before the board?
Grateful for our leadership and all of the commitment of our staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, um, I was gonna say the same thing with food service and, uh, this editorial in Chronicle today about all the community working with, and we're all working again, right, to help feed kids. So that's, that was a kudos, and there's some hardworking people out there. I, I was gonna focus, I, we had a Zoom meeting on our SAC, Rob Herman. We had a school advisory council meeting yesterday, and we did Zoom. So I know we've all been set up on Zoom, but, uh, but it, it worked very well. You know, I do have some questions about that, that I thought maybe for another meeting, we could address that Zoom issue because we are getting the free version, and, you know, that's gonna change at some point. But we have to look at what the budget would be if we were to pay for licenses for the hosts. Yes.
And just so you all know, because there's been so many major issues with Zoom, that Kathy's gone out and added a feature to all of the Zoom, um, participants where, because I was on a Zoom meeting this afternoon, and I have, as the leader of the, um, not packed, the leader of the meeting, I have to accept them to come into my meeting.
Into the waiting room.
So, they, she's added that since, you know, it's one of the features where we've got a little bit more security now.
Yes.
But I mean, one of the problems is, at least, because there were several articles in the newspaper about how this thing can be hacked, is we're still publishing the invitation numbers and the passwords, and our email has to be protected, too. Because if, if Joe Blow looks at, at your screen and sees those numbers, um, they might be able to still get in. So it's not foolproof, but, and hopefully we won't have any problem with our kids getting hacked here, or they look at...
So Doug, they're looking at that, too?
Yeah, I mean, the 40 minutes of free time is a good thing, but obviously, that's not gonna last. And I, I, I do know that if you have, you pay for the host, you can have as many people come to Zoom that aren't paying. So there is, you know, the host is the one who has the license.
My SAC meeting is next Thursday, but Forrest group, so I'll, I'll have, and she'll probably tell me to Zoom.
But I, I know that, you know, our IT department, Kathy Androski, even Lance Fletcher, they do a remarkable job, I think. Um, and, uh, just the Zoom training that I, I received, too, all, I mean, all those are great things. And then, uh, the last thing I just want to mention is, man, thank you for the SRO contract, this, the extra duty security contract, the Frosting Guard contract, they all got re-approved.
Signed and sealed.
Signed and sealed and delivered, and now we've approved them. And so grateful to our county commission for continuing to absorb some of the, the majority of the costs really of our school resource officer program, but they see the benefit that it is to be our school safety, and we're so grateful.
I've done five Zooms, three FSBIT, two SAECs. I'm getting Zoom efficient. Uh, did we find out about the light in Crystal River? Did you get that light to stop flashing?
I have no control.
Lisa, Lisa.
That's the city of somebody's...
The city of Crystal River.
Same as saying I don't have those connections or something. It's about my pay grade. Well, that's what...
They think, they think their school in session, and they slow everybody down at 20 miles an hour. Thank you, Sandy.
There being no further business to come before the board, the meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's not bad, guys, 40 minutes.
Are we gonna have a workshop meeting?
Uh, that would be... We didn't do one.
Sandy, we'll work with you on that to see if there's something to bring in for that since.
Yeah, if, if it, if it is, it would be the 28th, right?
I forgot, did I?
Have you tried with your...
14 days from today is the 28th.
I don't know if we have anything to bring on there, to be honest with you. We'll get with you.
It would be 28.
Okay.
Yeah, it, but just put a tentative on the, the morning of the 28th, and we'll let you know.
We can do it.
Well, let's just tell them, like you said. It's, it's workshop, it's for...
Or two of you can go ahead and...
You need me for anything? Yep.
We're done.